We're live.
Okay, 5:30. I'm sorry, Amanda, is it 5:30?
Yes, Mayor, it's 5:30.
All right, then we'll... At this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Frank Quinte to lead us in an invocation.
You are the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God of justice and mercy, we ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with the spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint and give us the spirit of service. Remind us that we are all stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need and help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a better community worthy of the human person. And finally, we pray for our new administration that this country now has. Help us to help those and our leaders to unite this divided country. God bless our troops here and abroad, and God bless the United States of America. In your name, Lord Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight, and thank you for participating, either by listening in on this broadcast meeting over the Internet or being here via Zoom or getting ready to be called to participate in Citizen Communication. And this time, I'll call the meeting to order, which has been duly posted for a regular city commission meeting, and go to the first item, which is Citizen Communication and Input. Amanda.
Mayor, we have five persons that want to speak on your Citizens' Communication. The first one is Jennifer Gonzalez, 702 Hunter Drive, and the topic is mask mandate as well as 10-person, 10% limit from outside homes, and she wants to be called.
All right, let's call her now, Ben, thank you.
Hello, Mrs. Gonzalez, this is Amanda Lisondo with the City of Harlingen. You asked to be called, and I'm gonna set the clock at two minutes, and I'll let you know when to start. You may start now, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yes, ma'am, so I believe the reason that I called you was in regards to holding, you know, the event, an event here in the city, it was supposed to be a social distance event where masks would be applied. And I understand that that was being rejected. My concern is that if, you know, these types of events are not allowed with social distancing, things like that, you know, but we were still allowing bars just to be held in those are closed doors. So based on what the science is telling us, Dr. Fauci, you know, there is a science that's like, you know, that it's healthier to do things from the outdoors versus indoors. And right now, what I'm seeing is that parks are being closed, but indoor facilities are being opened up. What I'm requesting is to hold some sort of outdoor event with social distancing measures applied, and we can also try and keep it at the bare minimum, where we do mostly, the majority of everything done virtually online.
Is that it, Mrs. Gonzalez? Are you done?
Well, that was my initiative, that was, that was, that was my, yes, that was the reason why I was calling. That was my issue, is that I've been trying to push, push through some events, you know, just to try and honor the COVID victims, just like my dad and a whole community that I represent. And I don't, I understand everything, we understand more than anything that we're in the middle of a pandemic, you know? But there's also things that we can, I would be willing to do to conform to make sure that we abide by social distance measures, make sure that there's not...
Mrs. Gonzalez? Your two minutes are up, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Because the item is not on the agenda, because the item is not on the agenda, we can't speak about it, but we have heard your communication, we'll have some staff follow up with you and kind of explain to you what we're doing with regard to events currently in the city. All right, the next individual, Amanda.
The next person there is John Purvis, and let me go ahead and call him. Am I getting dialed, ma'am? The calls not going through, ma'am.
Okay, well, if he calls back, then we'll take him up at the time when he calls back.
Okay, ma'am. Then the next three persons wanted to talk about the food truck park ordinance that's on the agenda, and they would like to be called during the discussion.
Right, we'll call them at the public hearing on item four. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a proclamation proclaiming January 28th, 2021 is Amanda C. Alizondo's seventh recertification day. And, you know, this is something that we really ought to be doing in person. I wish we could do this in person, but we gotta do it by Zoom. But I have a proclamation here that we're gonna read and issue today. It says, whereas Amanda, there's some pretty amazing things in here too, so I want everybody to pay attention. Whereas Amanda C. Alizondo was hired by the City of Harlingen in May of 2011 as the City Secretary to administer the duties and functions of the Office of the City Secretary. And whereas prior to coming to the City of Harlingen, Amanda started as a volunteer with the City of Weslaco, Texas, and on November 1975, she was hired as Secretary to the Public Works and Public Utilities Departments. It doesn't say this in the proclamation, but I think she must have been 10 years old when she was hired by Weslaco. She was later promoted to Assistant City Secretary, interim City Secretary on May 1984, and City Secretary on November 1984, and after 35 years, she retired from the City of Weslaco. And whereas in 1984, she enrolled in the Texas Municipal Clerks Association Certification Program to familiarize herself of the realistic duties and functions of the Office of the City Secretary and to hold the traditional and rightful standing as an officer of a municipality. The certification program is located at the University of North Texas, a professional program with college/university level courses. It is the third oldest of such programs in the country administered by the Texas Municipal Clerks Association and is recognized by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Whereas through this program, Amanda gained knowledge and methods to apply the duties of the Office of the City Secretary and the theory practices of local government. And in 1986, she graduated as a Texas Registered City Secretary, number 118. So there are not very many of those. And on June 2011, she graduated from the University of Texas Pan American. Also, the William P. Hobby Center for Public Service of Texas State University as a certified public manager, a nationally accredited public manager certification. Whereas Amanda is currently a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Texas Municipal Clerks Association, Lower Rio Grande Valley City Secretaries' Chapter, and served as President of the Lower Rio Grande Valley City Secretaries' Chapter, Secretary to the Texas Municipal League Region 12 Board of Directors, South Texas College Business Administration Advisory Board, and served in the following TMCA committees, the Resolutions Committee, Scholarship Committee, and Chairperson and historian in 2011. Whereas she was recognized as an International Municipal Clerks Conference and was presented with an award in Records Management, and during her tenure as City Secretary in Weslaco, serving as the local registrar, was awarded the exemplary five-star service award from the Texas Department of State Health Services repeatedly every year. Whereas the certification program is recognized and endorsed by Section 22.074 of the Local Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes annotated. The statute mandates recertification every five years. Whereas the original certification required successful completion of approximately 200 hours of individual home study over a four-course curriculum, a comprehensive examination of each of the four courses, and attendance at eight two-day professional development seminars. Recertification requires 72 hours of classroom instruction and a selection of additional education options, which may include college-level courses, certificate from the CPM, or facilitated book discussions, and independent comprehensive assessments. Now, therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, and on behalf of the city commissioners, express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Amanda C. Alizondo for her distinguished service to our community and highly commend her for the manner in which she carries out the duties and responsibilities of the Office of the City Secretary and proclaim January 28th, 2021 as Amanda C. Alizondo's seventh recertification day and call upon all residents of Harlingen to join me in recognizing her for her contributions and accomplishments in municipal government. So let's everybody clap and express our appreciation, but Amanda truly is the dean of city secretaries, I think, in the entire state of Texas, not just the Rio Grande Valley, but the entire state of Texas, maybe the nation. She is the most knowledgeable, professional, dedicated city secretary in the entire state, and we are so lucky to have her, having served here for nearly 10 years. You know, and really, you must have gone to work for Weslaco when you were 10 years old, because there's just no way. But we are so proud of your accomplishments, and we want to celebrate those. And this little dinky paper thing to hold the proclamation is not gonna do. Myra, we're gonna have to get her a real live framed for this, so that she can display this, hopefully proudly. Amanda, would you like to say anything?
First of all, Mayor, I want to thank you and the city commissioners and Dan. I am honored to receive this proclamation. I want to thank the City of Harlingen for allowing me to continue the recertification program. Yes, it has been a journey, but one that I truly enjoy. I love working for the public, and like you said, this may well be 10 years working with the City of Harlingen. Harlingen is a great community, and I'm so proud to be a part of the Harlingen team. And again, Mayor, thank you, city commissioners and Dan for your support, and my family for their love and support. Thank you, Mayor, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, well, that was a lot of fun, maybe we should just end the meeting there, and then, no, I guess we have to finish, but...
Thank you so much.
All right, item two is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on November 18th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Like the motion for an approval, ma'am, second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries, minutes are approved. Item three is the consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager on behalf of the City of Harlingen to sign into a local cooperation contract pursuant to Chapter 701 of the Texas Government Code between the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, UTRGV, and the City of Harlingen regarding police department jurisdiction and cooperation. Chief?
Mayor, commissioners, good evening. And yes, this is interlocal that Chief Adon Cruz brought over from UTRGV, and of course, with the campus here, so it just spells out how we'll work together. And it's already been reviewed by City Legal and approved by them, and I recommend approval. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Our next motion.
Second?
A discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item four is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 3, Section 111-62, use chart, by establishing a category for a food truck park and the use chart. Article 6, Section 111-140, by adding off-street parking requirements for a food truck park. Article 12, Section 111135, special use regulations and restrictions, by establishing regulations and restrictions for a food truck park. Add Article 15, Section 111-413, special use permit process by requiring a special use permit for a food truck park.
Mayor and City Commission, good evening. There is a lot of interest at this time for a food truck park to be developed in Harlingen, but we have no provisions in our ordinances to process a food truck park. So we developed an ordinance for your consideration that has different requirements to make sure that this project will, wherever it happens, that it will be a win-win for everybody, a win for the applicant and the owner, and a win for the City of Harlingen, and it works for the surrounding property owners as well. There is an ordinance in your packet, and just some of the highlights from the ordinance that we will require a parking lot, and it will be one space for every 3.5 people of maximum capacity. Also, the parking and restroom requirements will be based on what the applicant tells us in the SUP application, that what will be the maximum occupancy for the proposed food truck park. Some food truck parks have concert stages, there are large properties that could potentially have hundreds of people in the property. So, but the way it will work is when the applicant applies for the SUP, he or she will need to tell us what will be the maximum occupancy at any time, you know, including potential concert. So that way, the parking and the restroom requirements will be based on what the applicant tells us. So in the site plan that is submitted, we will check the parking, the site plan for the parking, make sure they have the adequate parking spaces, more or less that they have the adequate restroom facilities. One other major change is because of the potential noise implications where in the normal SUP application, we only notify property owners within 200 feet all around because of the potential noise implications, we're proposing to notify all property owners within 1,000 feet. That way, they get the notice of the public hearings, and if they have any objections or concerns, they can let us know, and that could affect your decision on whether to approve or not approve the SUP. Another major requirement is that we will not allow a food truck park within 1,000 feet of a property-sowned residential. As you may know, some of these parks, they have concert stages, or they have DJs, and they can be very noisy, especially in the evenings. So if you have a residential neighborhood nearby, then we will start getting noise complaints. And with these parks, the music is normally every day. So if the proposal comes in and there's residential zoning within 1,000 feet, we will reject the application. And then we have provisions for licensed security guards during peak hours. One security officer does only if alcohol is being sold or consumed at the site. And if there's concerts, then we will require two licensed security officers, also only if alcoholic beverages are consumed or sold at the site. And I also have some... So those are the highlights for the ordinance. And then I just want to show you some examples of food truck parks from the United States. So it can, you know, it can potentially look like this, or like this, or like this. This one has the concert stage, but we could potentially get, the person that wants to develop one here, he owns, he developed one in Brownsville, and so he has shown an interest in having a concert station in the back. And so also, I'm including a map showing potential areas where a food truck park could develop that will be, that there's no residential zoning within 1,000 feet. So there's different parts of the city where we could potentially approve an SUP for a food truck park. And this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. On January 13th, we did have Mr. Senka, who owns a food truck park in Brownsville and is interested in developing one in Harlingen, expressing some concerns about the minimum distance requirements to residential zoning and also parking requirements. But the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended the ordinance, and he also complimented staff on the 1,000-foot rule for residential zoning. And that's the presentation for this.
Okay, let's, we have three people that have signed up to speak on the public hearing. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the public hearing now, public hearing, I'd like Amanda to call.
I will proceed and call in Mr. Christians Senka, 1100 Palm Valley Drive, and I will call him right now.
Mrs. Christians Senka?
Yes, sir, this is Amanda Lisondo with the City of Harlingen. You asked to be called in the public programs, so you may start now, I'm gonna set the clock for two minutes. You may start.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So my main concerns, obviously, were the distance from residential zone. Can y'all hear me? I'm not sure if I'm...
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect, perfect. All right, well, my main concern was, as I was saying, was the distance from the residential zoning. We, you know, I know the main concern is noise complaints, and in Brownsville, we actually don't have a distance regulation on the ordinance. It's only, only requirement for zoning is medium retails, general retail, or like commercial. As far as the distance to it, the issues that we've had in the past with noise complaints, we've solved. And, you know, I wasn't sure if other food truck owners, you know, food truck park owners have addressed this, but with the right sound equipment and the right position of speakers, you can pretty much, you know, cancel out any noise past a certain area. We put the money and effort into hiring, you know, some really good sound guys to put together a system there at the park that's pretty much limited to about, you know, 100 to 200 feet away from the edge of our park. It's about as far as you can hear the music. Anything past that becomes pretty much indiscernible. And so I wanted to address that issue, because I know the concern was the music. As far as the, you know, being 1,000 feet from a residential zone, that's kind of the whole point of the thing, is to be kind of close to a residential zone that you can and get the family asset, you get young families. And in Park in Brownsville, we've got a lot, our large demographic is young family. We provide a venue that's really family-friendly, and we got a dog park there. We've got, you know, a small music station, it's not like we're throwing concerts, but we do have live music, and usually we have acoustic guitarists and stuff like that. And then all weekend, on Friday and Saturday, we'll have, you know...
Mr. Senka, your two minutes are up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Amanda, would you call the next speaker?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Castañeda, this is Amanda Lisondo, you signed up for Citizens' Communication. You had two minutes, you may start now.
All right, first of all, congratulations, Amanda, on your recognition. I just wanted to say, I'm a food truck owner. I think it's a great idea for something like this to come into Harlingen. I think it'll open a lot of doors for businesses here, for people to come spend money. I do ask, though, that it's, you have reasonable prices as far as charging the food trucks. I hear some of these other places are charging $500 a month. You know, I think that's kind of ridiculous pricing. I hope y'all decide to make it affordable for everybody. Another suggestion, I think there's a lot, parking lot behind the Pueblo Tire. I talked to Commissioner De La Rosa about it, I think that would be a good spot, maybe to set up the food truck park, or if not, maybe even Destination Park, maybe White Wing Stadium, set it up in there. That would be a good place, you can even host concerts and stuff in there as well. I don't know, that's pretty much all I have to say. I, you know, hope y'all, you know, do approve it and, you know, just take into consideration keeping it fair pricing for everybody. And another thing, if you do approve it... And another thing, if you do approve it, you know, let there be more than one food vendor with the same item, because I tried to get into some farmers, three men at a farmer's market, they're only allowing one one person, you know, to sell that type of food. And I don't think that's that's fair. I think it should be a fair for, you know, for multiple people. And that's it, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll go to the we'll go to the next speaker now.
Okay.
Hello?
Ron, this is Amanda Ron. You signed up for.
All right, let me let me go ahead and start. I'll go and share the sentiment of Mayor Boswell that current accolades of Amanda Lisondo fall short of her merit and due recognition. Due to the constraints I have, the last caller and the previous one noted the one thousand foot. And Mr. Mendez showed you a map. And with the exception, maybe around the Bass Pro area, which I think is gonna get more and more congested, but the three the three eight one sided in the east side are voted on the absurd. And really, the only one like just mentioned by the gentleman about Pueblo runs afoul. If you consider the Baxter Building or whatever it's called now to be a residence, there really is no one thousand parameter that makes any sense. And again, uh, maybe just the one deep on the south side, so it could be considered the San Benito Park also, I guess. It behooves us to try to get something near people. Not everybody can afford Uber or Lyft or even some of the new buses that are running in town. Residents want to have good quality food and they don't want to drive all the way across town. And we're that big. I mean, we're either a really little bitty town, given the map. Or, as you all like to tell, we're a big town. So with the exception of downtown, I don't see how you're gonna make that map work. But I I know there's one question issue, the sound does have to be controlled to some extent. Given my time, there's not enough for me to understand. I was looking at a different chapter instead of chapter one eleven. So that was on me, but thank you very much as usual.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, before we go to the action item, do the do the does the city commission have any questions for the staff? Commissioner Al?
Yes, so I want to make sure I understood something. When when Javier was making his presentation, he he made it sound like the the owner of this food truck park in Brownsville had no problems with the one thousand feet. It's the way I understood it. And am I right, Javier, or am I wrong?
In in Brownsville, they they don't have that regulation.
That isn't my question. That isn't my question. You said, what I understood that you said is that you have no, that he had no problem. In fact, he he had no issues within a thousand feet of a residence.
Correct.
That's not what he's saying, and that's not what's in the 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 notes from the planning and zoning meeting. He's 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 claiming it's too restrictive to be within a thousand feet.
Yes, that's that's what we have in the ordinance and and we have that one thousand foot regulation. They cannot be they cannot be residential zoning within one thousand feet of the subject property. And he he feels that that's too restricted, that it should be reduced.
But that's not what I understood when you made your presentation. So he is in opposition to that. So my question is, a a thousand feet is probably a little over a city block that would, you know, average lot fifty-five feet wide? That'd be twenty twenty houses?
More or less, yes.
Okay. I'm looking at your map. You you have blue and red. I'm gonna take if the blue and red are acceptable zones and the yellows are not acceptable zones?
Correct.
Okay. You know, I I I don't know which, I don't know which he has. You know, which park he has in Brownsville. I've been to a couple of the parks in Brownsville, been to the one up in in Edinburgh. I mean, I I think this is really, really good. And I think the second caller has misunderstood that we're gonna own the park, and that's not correct. Is that this is to allow a a a property owner to convert a piece of property to a park? Is that correct?
Correct. It's for private developers to develop a privately owned food truck park.
Okay. I I I don't know if my questions are asked or answered, because I I kind of feel like if if somebody's gonna put in a food park, they're gonna have acoustic guitar. It's gonna be really a tone down place. I mean, the one in Brownsville, the one that I went to that that is called the Broken Spoke, not Broken Spoke, a Broken Sprocket, I think is what it's called, but it's a little food po- somebody know what it's called?
The Broken Sprocket, yeah.
Broken Sprocket. And, you know, they don't have music outside. They have music kind of around the the trucks themselves. And so I'm just kind of concerned that if somebody wants to put in a food park, and let's say it's it's within, you know, like you said, the a thousand feet, that way all the businesses know that it's coming in. If we had a thousand foot notification circle and the and the neighbors object to it, then I don't have a real issue with that, but I I have a real issue of saying thousand feet from a residential area. I mean, I I live in a residential area. I'm right next to the mall. And and I'm just concerned that that somebody will get close to the mall, but close to residential, and now they're out. That's just my comment.
So may I ask a question? And if you put, take your your map off the screen so I can see everybody. So I don't know how to how to do it. There you go. Well, I want to see. I have a question. How does how does these these restrictions that you're trying to put onto this park? How is that gonna affect our our own parks and what we do as a city, whether it's the Fourth of July? Or we have, you know, event like Real Fest or whatever events that we're putting on? How do are we are we holding ourselves to the same standards that we're asking the private citizens to adhere to?
No, I think this is only for privately owned food truck park.
Yeah, that's not my question. My question is, are we holding them to a stricter standard than we hold ourselves when we have an event or we have a some any kind of a city-sponsored event? Are are we are we are we not adhering to the same requirements with noise or considering the residents? Because we hold something at Bogus Bogus Stadium, you hold something at Victor Park, you hold some, you're gonna have noise, right?
Yeah, on the one thousand separation to residential, I I believe so. It's a different, it will be a different standard.
Because you have you have a football game going on. I can hear that at my house and I'm on the loop.
Yeah, the the only difference I I think is that here you have potential noise every day. Where football games, you have a few.
I would imagine these events are gonna be held more on the weekends, just like the football game would be, just like a a city-sponsored event. And again, Dan, I'd like to see if we're in conflict with, you know, what what, I mean, again, how do we hold ourselves accountable? I I'm just not comfortable with putting restrictions on somebody that's gonna come invest big money and put dollars into our community. And and yet we don't get to, we're not following the same standards, if that makes any sense.
You know, Rich, I live next to Victor Park. When when they have a a little party over there pre-COVID, right? I mean, we sit we sit out in the front yard and listen to the music and, you know, it it I I I think you're you hit the nail. That was my concern. Are we holding the ourselves to the same standard? And I think I think what you're saying is very valid.
I think that something like this, we should go ahead and and I'm for it. I'm for the food truck. And I think that when they're gonna, wherever they decide they want to do the food truck, we should have them apply with an S U P, notify the people around that area. If they oppose, then we don't we don't pass it. But if they're okay with it, then we go ahead and move forward and give them the permit.
And they underst- they're gonna have to understand that they have a noise problem. It's just like a bar. I mean, we in in my district, we had a bar close to a a mobile home park. And they finally closed the the bar down. And was it aggravating for the the residents? Yes. And the bar owner didn't? I I don't know. I mean, they tried, but I kind of agree with with what Christian said. He said that technology's changed. And I think I I would hate to see us lose a a potential to have business, but at the same time, knowing where I live and knowing the type of noise that we have from our own city park, I would at least say one thousand feet notification. That way, nobody can say, well, we didn't know about it. I mean, I hear that. I hear that over and over again. Well, we didn't hear about it. Well, it's because you weren't within two hundred feet of the.
I agree.
So, Dan, can can we can we revise that portion of the ordinance? And
The 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 city council can approve whatever the city council deems best for this ordinance.
Okay. Well, I I haven't heard from Mazmar. We haven't heard from Quinta before I make my motion.
And before you do, what the one thousand foot notification, I do think is a great idea. And falling into a a within a general retail or or industrial zone area, just like we do with any other business. You know, maybe not the thousand foot requirement, but if you're in a G R area, because it is a business, it's not a residence. And, you know, we do have zonings for those. Now, Allison, correct me if I'm wrong. Do the P and Z approved it unanimously. So is there something the city council has to do in particular? No, okay, just a unanimous vote. I mean, a a majority vote.
So Rich and Ruben.
Wait, wait. Let Al answer Dan's question.
I'm sorry. I thought I thought I saw her shake her head.
Yeah, I shook my head. It's a it's a favorable recommendation. I think the the super majority will apply when it's an unfavorable recommendation. This is a favorable recommendation, but of course you can this is the public hearing in the first read. So for the second read and the final adoption, you can make some changes. As long as you're not changing the entire ordinance, but you can make some modifications that that stay within the the realm of of what's being covered.
Yeah, that was what I was gonna suggest is that maybe it sounds to me like the commissioner wants to address this one thousand foot rule. Commissioner Del Rosas offered a a suggestion about how to approach it with an S U P process. And that maybe the thing to do is to kind of keep it, keep it going, because it sounds like everybody wants food trucks. Just go ahead and, you know, pass it tonight and then ask the staff to revise it or give us a couple of options on the second reading in in accordance with sentiments that have been expressed here. Because I also I also had a, you know, we we have a food truck area in the destination park. And my guess is it's within a thousand feet of a residence or two. And so that doesn't seem right, that we would, as as Commissioner Rubik was noting, that we we would hold ourselves to a different standard than a private property owner. So I think that ought to be addressed.
Understood.
Okay. Anybody else?
A couple of questions. So this is a private person, a private developer buying land and making it for these food trucks, tents, benches and whatever. And as a private business, he could charge a dollar a week or any number there greater than that. But it's his business and we have no say so, other than hygiene and health and noise perhaps on how he runs his business. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The the only fee that the city would charge would be for the food permit. Just like any other food establishment. And those those permit fees are established by the city council.
Okay, any other any other questions for the staff before we go to the action item? Okay, let's go to four B, which is a consideration, possible action to approve ordinance on first reading to amend the city code of or- ordinance is chapter one eleven zoning article three, section one eleven dash sixty-two use chart. And I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption at this time.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen code of ordinances by adding various provisions governing the location, use, existence and operation of food truck parks as follows. Chapter one eleven zoning article three, section one eleven sixty-two, establishing a category in the use chart, article six, section one eleven one forty, adding off-street parking requirements, article twelve, section one eleven one thirty-five, special use regulations and restrictions, establishing other regulations in article fifteen, section one eleven four thirteen, special use permit process, requiring a special use permit, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, and there's a a discussion would simply be, please have the staff come go make some potential revisions or some options to this in accordance with the discussion that we had earlier. Is there any other discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. All right, I think Mr. Purvis has called in or is trying to call in, so we'll go, we'll allow him to communicate to us.
Amanda, the number I have is two six four seven zero nine three.
Seven zero nine three, yes.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Purvis. This is Amanda Lisondo. You signed up for the citizens communication. And it's in regards to some drainage ditch. You may start now, so you have two minutes.
Okay, well, my name is John Purvis. I live out here at the intersection of F N five oh seven and five oh eight north of Harlingen. And the City of Harlingen has a drainage ditch out here that basically you guys send your water, your floodwater, all the way out here to us. The drainage ditch overflows at F N five oh eight, and it makes all of our homes out here lake houses. The City of Harlingen has been aware of this drainage ditch for years. The previous owners here knew well about it and didn't inform me about it at all. I want to know what is Harlingen doing about the drainage ditch problem out here? And also, I want to know, since Harlingen was nice enough to annex my land out here and double my taxes, when am I going to get any city utilities? There are no, I have no water from Harlingen. I have a septic tank instead of Harlingen sewage. The only thing I get out here is garbage service when they decide to show up. Also, you know, just when are you guys going to pay any attention to us out here? Instead of ignoring us and just, you know, letting this flood? When is there going to, when am I going to see any of my taxes that I'm paying towards Harlingen to work for me? That's basically about all I have to say. Here, I'm being charged taxes by Harlingen, but I get nothing from them. And I'm gonna know what is going to happen with this drainage ditch. When are you guys going to fix it? When is tax dot going to fix it?
Your two minutes are up, Mr. Purvis.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Purvis, because this is not a, because this is not a an item. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Purvis, because this is not a, because this is not a, an item. Per discussion, we're limited in h- how we can respond, but unless the staff wants to respond now, I'll just have. Uh somebody from our staff uh communicate with you offline and uh and have a further discussion and we'll report back to the commission.
Uh one of the engineers for Harlingen.
And that I'm just, that's a, that's my, that's our response, Dan, is there anything else you wanna?
No, man, we I will have Carlos contact him and talk to him.
Okay, all right, thanks, thank you, Mr. Purvis. All right, we'll go next to item five, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential multifamily. M two to plan development PD district to allow for a single-family residential. Or a thirty-six point seven one nine acre tract being part or portion of lots one, two, seven, eight. Block one forty-eight San Antonio Water Company subdivision located on the north side of East Treasure Hills Boulevard west of five oh nine.
Yes, Mayor, this is a proposed uh planned development district of the property along East Treasure Hills Boulevard. Between the Matson FM four five oh nine, it's a thirty-six acre tract. And the proposal is a single-family homes, this is the aerial photo of the property. This is a picture from the from the street from East Treasure Hills Boulevard. And this is the site plan uh for the proposed residential subdivision, it's the same developer as Tres Lagos subdivision in McAllen. So if it, like the subdivision over there involves a lot of uh curved streets. Uh mini parks, um walking trails connecting the the little, the small parks. Uh small lake, green areas, uh all to be maintained by the homeowners association. Uh just a different kind of subdivision. This is the the future land use map, the single uh, the map for the future is a single, is a low-density residential. This went before the planning and zoning commission, January thirteen, and nobody showed up in opposition. And the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of the PD district for this property.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation, Javier?
Yes.
All right, uh we're gonna item A, which is a public hearing, Amanda, I believe, nobody. I don't believe anybody signed up for this, is that right?
That's correct, Mayor, no one signed up.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration, possible action to rezone. Uh from residential multifamily M two to plan development district. Uh regarding those properties, so could I, could I ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen. Res zoning from residential multifamily to plan development district to allow for a single-family residential. For a thirty-six point seven one nine acre tract being a part or portion. Out of lots one, two, seven and eight, block one forty-five, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision. Located on the north side of East Treasure Hills Boulevard, west of FM five oh nine, providing for publication. And ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Can we get the full screen, please?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mesmar, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, or is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing now, all those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Item six, the consideration, possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading. To abandon and vacate a zero point zero six acre tract comprised of a zero point zero three acre tract out of a ten-foot. Utility easement out of Valley Baptist Academy subdivision and a point. Zero three acre tract out of a ten-foot utility easement. Out of Valley Baptist Academy subdivision number two located thirty-seven hundred East Harrison Avenue.
Yes, Mayor, the Valley Baptist Academy has a plan to expand this building, which is dormitories to the west. But there is a utility easement uh shown in red that is a. In the way of the proposed expansion. Uh we checked with all the utility companies, including engineering and Harlingen Water Works. And no, and no utility company is using the easement. And and no one is uh projecting to use, to need the easement in the future. So based on that, uh staff recommends approval of abandoning the utility easement. And approving of approval of the ordinance in your pocket.
All right, is there any, uh I guess we need to ask the city, well, first, are there any questions about this? Then I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance releasing, abandoning and vacating uh point oh six acre tract comprised of point oh three acre tract of a ten-foot. Utility easement out of Valley Baptist Academy subdivision. And a point oh three acre tract out of a ten-foot u- utility easement. Out of Valley Baptist Academy subdivision number two, located at thirty-seven hundred East Harrison Avenue. Providing for the release of said tract, the adjacent property owners via deed without warranty and authorizing the city manager. To execute all necessary documents to effect said release and abandonment.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh all those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. I have seven, public hearing and take action on amending. The city of Harlingen's twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen consolidated plan. And one-year action plan to include the special allocation of four hundred ninety-five thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars in CDBG. C V funds authorized by the coronavirus aid relief and economic uh security act, CARES act. To prevent, prepare for and respond to the coronavirus. Say, uh is that Sandy?
Yes, good morning, uh I mean, I'm sorry, good afternoon or evening, Mayor and commissioners and staff. Um the city of Harlingen is set to receive a second allocation of funding um in the amount of four hundred ninety-five thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars. Um this is a part of the CARES act that was signed into law in March of twenty twenty. And of course, it's to prevent, prepare for and respond to the coronavirus. Um as part of the process to accept this funding, um the city must undergo a substantial amendment. Um and that substantial amendment would be to our existing five-year consolidated plan. And the twenty nineteen action plan um to include this funding. Uh the substantial amendment requires two public hearings and of course additional administrative duties that we have to um undergo. Um intend to use this funding for internet access to the Public Housing Authority. Uh residents and of course administration of the funding. Uh the financial hardship program and uh. Personal protection um equipment. And of course, staff does um recommend approval of this item, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Anybody have any question, Sandy?
Sandy, did you cover the uh the grant for the internet access for the housing authority?
Uh yes, we've included um a hundred thousand dollars for that. Uh I think that the uh Housing Authority had already uh signed an agreement. For funding for that, a hundred thousand dollars.
This is a great opportunity to assist uh those families that fall into the low-income criteria. Uh especially the for those that are struggling so much right now during this pandemic. So staff has recommended a pool, uh we will come back with a an amendment. Uh and a plan in addition to that for city consideration.
Right.
And the advisory committee did approve this on Monday, so it received their approval.
All right, is there, is there a motion to uh uh approve uh approve the one-year action plan amendment?
A move. A move, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries, thank you, item eight, consideration, possible action to accept.
Mayor, I'm so sorry, uh we were supposed to have a public hearing for it, so. If you can maybe call for that, I don't remember if anybody signed up for it.
No one signed up for item number seven.
All right. Uh.
Thank you.
A public hearing, but there is no, but under the, under the. Uh COVID nineteen rules that we have right now, no one signed up for it, so there is. Uh so no one has appeared for the public hearing. Thank you. All right, consideration of possible action to accept or reject bids for the Vala Middle Middle School connectivity project under bid number. Twenty twenty-one dash O two.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, uh this is the uh bridge portion of the Vala Middle School connectivity project. Uh that we've been working on, um we went out for bids uh last month. And we received two bids for this project, um one was from G and G Contractors in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh and the second was from HCM uh Hulkmont uh in the amount of three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Uh and and both of these were uh uh larger than we had anticipated. Um you know, based on on previous uh similar bridges. Uh we set our 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 estimate uh around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so. Uh we are recommending to reject all bids uh uh in this case. Um the next item is is uh is the alternate for that. Uh it 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 involves a uh a a contract through By the Board, uh which we can get the the work. Uh completed for uh a a price more in line with what we had originally estimated.
May I add to the motion that we reject?
Second.
The bid, yes, thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, sign, the motion carries and the bids are uh are rejected. Item nine, consideration of possible action to authorize city manager to execute. A purchase agreement with Amstar for the installation of a single-span pedestrian. Bridge for Vala Middle School connectivity project in the amount not to exceed two hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Uh you know, we we uh we we got this uh pricing through Byboard, which is a purchasing co-op. Uh and uh we will get the uh the bridge installed uh for that price.
Motion to approve?
Second, and Eddie, thank you for 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 going out for that extra bid, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All right, all the, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries, all right, let's.
We just, we just made a whole neighborhood very happy.
Yeah, this is a great project.
Yes.
Project.
Yes. Thank you.
Item ten, consideration, possible action to to adopt a resolution authorizing. The submittal of a voting access grant application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. Committing matching funds and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents pertaining to the construction.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Commission, um this item here is um. The this the, we're interested in in applying to Texas Parks and Wildlife for a voting access grant. Um and what we wanna do is be able to build a kayak launch um launching facilities along the Arroyo. Um and so uh the deadline for the grant application is February first. And so part of the application requires us to get a resolution adopted by the city commission. Where we're committing the matching funds and then um authorizing somebody from the city. Uh to sign all the documents if we get funded. Um and so that's what this resolution uh is for. In the summary, I I kind of um came up, came up with an estimate for the project uh or the application. And so uh we would like to uh at least, if we could get two launching structures, um. Uh we would, we would love to do that, and so these, again, these are just estimates. Uh but we we estimated two launching structures uh to run us about two hundred thousand. Um a restroom facility at two twenty, parking lot eighty-seven thousand five hundred, uh any signage, eighty-five hundred. Um engineering and design, uh sixty-one thousand nine twenty, and then the permitting, um. And environmental would be eighteen thousand. Now, our maximum that we are allowed to um to apply for is five hundred thousand. And so that's why we try to keep it uh within that amount. Um one thing that we could do, um if we're successful, of course, is uh apply to Valley Baptist and maybe um. Uh for the match, for our match, uh the project, so. Again, these are just estimates, um we would like to apply, um we've been talking about this, about the the Blue Trail for. Several years now, and so we would like to um uh throw our hat in and see if we, if we're successful in getting that grant. Uh for the kayak and canoe launching facility.
I I think what Javier's trying to say, that we can't, you know, we estimated the cost, we cannot commit to two. Launchpads, two launch areas, but we definitely wanna go after this funding. And at the very least, create one launching area. Um but uh, you know, the bids will dictate what the cost is going to be. Uh and uh and what we do wanna pursue is, this is part of the active tourism plan, there is a blue trail through the Arroyo. So this is an opportunity to further that effort.
Add to motion for an approval?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item eleven, board appointments, are are there any board appointments?
No.
None.
I I have none, sir.
All right, hearing no board appointments. Then we'll go on to item twelve, which is an executive concession. Attorney consultation pursuant to section five fifty-one point oh seven one. Therefore, the code to seek advice regarding the city's legal duties and obligations. In connection with pending litigation style, the number Ruben R. Pena Senior versus City of Harlingen, Texas Civil Action one. Point eight CB one sixty-three in the United States District Court, Southern District of Texas Brownsville Division. And related legal matters, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some of.
Second. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, we will now uh be adjourning this meeting to uh. Uh seek uh to meet with our lawyer in executive session. We will have to come back to this public meeting, and simply to adjourn the meeting, there will not be any action. Uh taken when we come back, other than the announcement that we are out of executive session. So we'll meet you in the executive session room. Well, we are out of executive session at seven forty-two. And that concludes our meeting for the evening, so uh everyone take care of yourselves and be safe and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.